Good morning, Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the middle of the month of January already, Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, to the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. We have a full complement of Commissioners. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, along with Vice Chair Commissioner Roy Rogers, Commissioner Nefisa Fai, Commissioner Pam Treese, and Commissioner Jerry Willey. We'll get going on board and leadership communication. Since we have three memos, and I don't want to forget any of them, the first one is our county budget principles and priorities. These are the items that we discussed last week, and everybody thumbs up. Great. Then we have a draft letter for the transportation system unifier loop proposal. Does anyone have any comments?
MSTIP money going into that?
That's from the from the fund.
Opportunity Fund?
Yeah, Opportunity Fund.
That is exactly the place it should be. Yes.
Yes.
Yep, Salmon Berry Trail. Everybody thumbs up? So there's two memos on that.
Yeah, the second one is just a letter of support. First one is talks about that program itself, and then the second one is a letter of support we're sending to the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation.
Thank you. I only printed one of them. So that's why I'm wondering, do we need to get thumbs up on the second one, or it's just FYI?
I need to get thumbs up. I'd like to have everybody sign all signatures on this.
So they're both both signature rights. Okay. I know I read it. I just didn't have a lighter in front of me. Okay, we're all set. Okay. Board Communication, who would like to go first?
Always the shortest one in terms of things I this week.
It's been instructive.
I need one of those little things. That would be good.
Evan will work on that for you.
That'd be good. Let's see, he's gonna try to hit on Wednesday night that Planning Commission Recognition Event. We had a couple people who've been here all the time. I suspect others might be doing that. Thursday, I got a preact meeting, meeting, and then I've got I expect a lot of you going to WA legislative meeting as well, that's Saturday evening, and then on Friday morning, I'm at the two seventeen meeting. Seems like we did all our work, did all our allocations, but we're back at it, so I don't have a lot to share. I will share with you that in asked the question at WSI about the upcoming meeting that they're having, that they're hosting regarding a lot of folks on labor front. It says almost full. Most folks attending are staff people. It might be something because you were asking, is that something you should carve out time for? If you'd like, I mean, it's more detailed, but you can get the same presentation. They could send it to you. So it's up to you whether you want to go. I'm not sure I'm gonna make it. It's just we had the same mini presentation last Friday morning, so it should be a twofer for me.
Are you talking about the one on the twenty-fifth?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Yeah, I'm signed up to go to that.
Yeah, good. Take good notes. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll jump in here. As everybody realized, it was a busy week last week, and so met with the Fire Chief, the Hillsborough Fire Chief Downey, to talk about the EMS Alliance. He is Chair President of the EMS Alliance. I just wanted to get some insight as to what the fire departments liking liking the process that we're going through, and certainly the modifications to our ambulance, our emergency services. So it was a good conversation. I appreciated him taking the time to meet with me and have that conversation. Also met with Senator Weber, who is the replacement Senator for Betsy Johnson's district. So it was the first time I had met with her. It was a Zoom call, of course, but I didn't know that she was formerly the Mayor of Telemoc, and then she was a state rep, and now she's a Senator. And so she's going to be a good representation, I think, for the certainly the coastal communities. And they're dealing with homelessness as well as as homes in the coastal areas because they because they have a lot of tourism that has turned their homes into rentals, and so that's a problem for the workforce. So she'll be working on that. Also met with Senator Janine Solomon, and kind of caught up a little bit about her push for industrial land, certainly her bills that she has submitted, as well as the semiconductors. And so I will have more conversations with her about that as we move. We're gonna have some more conversation today about industrial land, so that'll be good. ROMAC was last week, so I went to ROMAC to Telemoc to do COPA, do Northwest Act, and come back here and took my grandson to soccer all on one day. That's pretty good. But ROMAC is certainly trying to kind of re-envision, I think, themselves a little bit, maybe a little strategic plan work might be in place there. So we're gonna be doing that. We they have agreed to move their meetings from quarterly to every other month, so and they may be asking us to reduce the number from twelve to nine. Evidently, Ermdeck has the same issues. They have three positions open. We have three positions open. They're very, very hard to find, so I don't I don't know what the thought process was on that. So I'll get circle back around with them. Like I said, COPA and Northwest Alliance in Telemoc, at Telemoc Community College, a very nice facility down there. I've never been down there. Leanne Thompson was elected to be the Chair again, and so we will move ahead on that. We've ordered for new authors, other officers. One of the projects that was brought forward for consideration for support is the Port of Astoria Pier Two West Rehab rehabilitation. That pier is starting to slide into the ocean, and it's a significant economic development environment there. They have lots of information about the economic impact, about creating jobs, tax revenues, of course, doing all those things. But it's a very important project for Astoria, and so they didn't ask for our support, but it might be something we might want to consider. I'll give you that so that you can read a little bit more about that. Northwest Act, Stacy Shelter is the new the new my assistant that comes in and does transportation updates and reports. He took the place of Joe Yonkins, who, of course, retired. And Arla Miller from ODOT presented applications for the Telemont County Transit or for the STIP. Wait a minute, I gotta get this right. The Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund for projects were committed or submitted there, three in Telemont County Transit and one in Klasma County. And so that was, of course, approved and passed by the Northwest Act Group. And lastly is Leanne Thompson, who is also the Commissioner for Cutsup County and co-chair on Budget and Finance with AOC, is going to reach out to you, Chair, and want to have a conversation about your concerns about the dues. So she'll be reaching out this weekend, asking for that information.
I'm happy to join. Yeah, I think we'll make it a twofer.
Yeah, well, there'll be two of them, so it'll be two to two there. Anyway, yeah, she asked if she could, if that was gonna be okay, and I said, yeah, that's the best way to get information. So that's all I got.
Great. Somebody go next? Sure.
I've got a tickle in my throat, so if I sneeze, I apologize. Feeling fine, though, feeling fine. I attended the Central Cultural Board of Directors meeting, and Central Cultural does a lot of work regionally, as you know. The new business included the Authorization Resolution for the Alder Nine Project. It's a collaboration with Related Northwest to develop one hundred and fifty-nine affordable housing units in Portland's Central East Side. So just FYI on that. The I attended the Impact Coordinating Committee, and as I believe you know, Counselor, he's got three names, and it's Vince Jones Dixon from Gresham is going to be the Chair. I'm going to be the Vice Chair, and the nomination will be out to the Mayor of Oregon City to be the second Vice Chair. So that's, yeah, oh, thank you. I think I think I was I stood still long enough. Anyway, it's actually, it's a great opportunity, and I've been working with Krista Faba and Stephen Roberts to talk about just how what issues we want to make sure we get in front of MPAC and some of the issues for all of the county in relationship to to MPAC. This we did, but the purpose of the coordinating committee is to work on the schedule for the next quarter and into the future. We are scheduled for the High Capacity Transit Strategy Update on the readiness tiers, and that'll be from the from Metro Staff, and then a Garbage and Recycling Systems Facility Plan Phase Two. It's a gap analysis summary. I did forward the email from Oregon Trails about the recycling and the issue at AOC to Andy Shaw. So just so that you know that that did get there. So that's MPAC. If you have any issues about those two topics, you know, or anything you'd like me to think about.
I think for for MPAC and JPAC, what would be helpful for us to get confirmation of early in the year is, what are those things that the Council has to adopt before the end of the year?
And I can get back RTP, obviously, and
RTP and the UGR.
Yeah, those are the big issues.
That I tend to think of.
And that's exactly what we've been talking about in-house here. So
I don't think either of them are due this year.
But we're in that.
I think the UGR may be next year.
I believe so, and but we're in that escalation phase, so it's important that we get our issues on the table during that ramp up phase.
Yeah.
Hi, I attended the tour of the ridge with the legislators. Thank you, Erin Doyle, for putting that together. It was very well done. It's really interesting to look at the rehabilitation issues that are necessary in fifty-year-old properties, and how much how much money it takes to do that. I in attendance with the Chair and with Commissioner Rogers, so I'll I'll let you two talk further. Oh, you've done great, if you'd like. I think having the representatives Maxine Dexter and Ben Bowman there was, I think that's really important to make sure we're making that connection. We also had representatives from the offices of Representative Pham, Graber, and McLean. So the information is getting to the state legislature about the work that's being done and what support we will need. The new Tiger Council President Yi Kang Wu was also there, which was which was good in his district and appropriate that he was there. Glad to see him. There were two legislative concepts that were brought forward for our consideration, and I'm sure we'll be discussing those into the future. One was LC six seven nine, which is preserving publicly funded affordable housing, and that's a statute amendment. We'll learn more about that. The other was LC eight oh one, the Maintain Affordable Homes Across Oregon, and that's to create a new tax credit. So the point in bringing those up is just be watching for those. I also attended the Policy Advisory Board Meeting, and that was last Thursday night. It was a really quick review of the projects that are coming up, just a high-level review. We'll be getting the presentations later this month, and then we'll do the ratings. We also recognized Luis Hernandez from Cornelius for his three-year service on the path, so that was good. This week I have Ermdeck. I have a meeting with Chair Vega Peterson. I have the Community Action Board of Directors meeting, a meeting with Representative Helm, the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee meeting, the Hack Forum, and an RDPO organizational meeting on Friday. So busy.
You may want to ask Rep Helm about the the legislative efforts to recognize the public engagement that's gone into community planning. He mentioned that at Town Hall that I was at last week, gave a great description, and has really urged me to lean into the ideas that they're proposing to help accelerate the development.
Really? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fai?
Good morning. Happy Tuesday, everyone. You know, when you're speaking about our legislators, over the weekend, I was reviewing some of the committee assignments at the legislators. Not a lot of our, I think this is a proud Washington County moment for me, or was, is that a lot of our legislators are in leadership roles and committees this year. So I think I think it's gonna be a really big win, not only for Oregon, but also all of especially Washington County, so.
That was the email from Erin. That was great.
It's it's, I don't know if it was, but I saw the committee's assignments, and I was paying attention to Washington County. In terms of two things I want to highlight, there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of meetings coming forward this week, so many. I won't go into the glory details of it, but two things I want to highlight. One thing, Chair Harrington, you mentioned about JPAC. JPAC is happening this week. There's a lot of informational discussion happening, not any action moment or action opportunity that we need to vote on as Washington County and as your liaison. But there is one thing that I will share with you, and that is the work plan for JPAC and what we plan to accomplish this year. And RTP is actually set to to be adopted quarter three this year. So I think there's a lot of transportation discussions, and some of the discussion we're having at JPAC on Thursday is a lot that this board has been engaged, such as the High Capacity Transit Corridors. And so I'll bring back what the committee says, then with that information, and definitely checking in with Stephen and Chris, if there is any discrepancies where the committee is going versus where we've been said we're gonna this is our direction for our board. So that's JPAC. One of the other thing that one of the other conversations in last week that I've engaged on that I wanted to highlight, and this potentially have a policy implications for us in the future, is something that Commissioner Willie and Chair Harrington were just passing around the magazine, which is Urban Rural Reserve, Urban and Rural Reserve Conversation. And this, you know, I had a meeting with Tom V. I think
Tom Vander Sander?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Tom V.
Tell the last name.
Tom V. Before. That's great.
Yeah, we've made the agreement. If I was nervous of Mr. Belling. So Mr. Tom and I had a really good conversation about the Urban Rural Reserve, and this is a really conversation about the semiconductors and what it means for Washington County and what it means for Oregon if we're going to be competitive and provide, you know, in terms of site readiness and two sites that are over five hundred plus acres. And this led me into sort of like a deep dive on on homework task before for that meeting, and come to find out, Chair Harrington, you probably could be the you could do this conversation about Urban Rural Reserve, because I think you're you, Commissioner Willie, were present back in twenty ten. But I think
Not only was I present, I was the metro rep to the Core Four.
I won't revisit any of that.
Don't need to relive those days.
But interestingly, like, the bill around twenty twenty fourteen, which reset the clock for a lot of these rural and urban reserves, was quite interesting. I think I spent a whole night reading a lot of the testimonies, and I had I had some questions for Mr. Tom and had a really good discussion. So I look forward. I have some opinions about this idea now, and look forward to that discussions, and want to come back to our board from how we can be, how we can play a role around semiconductors and make Oregon be competitive and divert some of that money to Washington County specifically. So I think that's all for me. I think we have a lot of the meeting scheduled on our board. So I turn it back to you, Chair Harrington.
Great, thank you. So last week, I had a monthly meeting with the Washington County Mayors. We touched a little bit on the legislative agendas. But the easiest reference to all of them are available through the GR memo. Just some different thoughts from different jurisdictions, as Commissioner Rogers noted to me. This week, the CWS Essentials Class on Thursday and Saturday for local city councils. Excuse me. And, oh, just to be clear, on the letter earlier, there was just the one Salmon Berry Trail memo. The other one was just the information piece that was linked in. So just one memo. So the other thing I wanted to follow up on is on AOC dues. So I highlighted this last or on on the fifth. So going back to the informational emails I sent you back in November, as you know, we we the whole membership of AOC adopted a new due structure at the business meeting in November of twenty twenty-one. So our dues in twenty twenty-two was the first year of the new due structure, and the presentation that I had forwarded to you again in November highlighted that one of the reasons for the new due structure was for having a fair structure, but also a consistent structure. Well, that consistent structure is causing our dues to change with a wide swing. So it was a thirty-four percent change in twenty twenty-two, and the proposal for twenty twenty-three was a twenty percent change, which, as we heard from Ms. Angie, we don't currently have the funds in our adopted budget. So if we had wanted to approve the full due structure, we would need to do a supplemental budget. As you know, I raised a flag to AOC as late as April of last year, and tried to get their attention on it. Didn't get much attention from them. Part of it was they had trouble getting a quorum in their Budget and Finance Committee. So so we have the structure that it is, of course. I had communicated to them the number of of counties who were footing five counties. Well, it doesn't matter. Yeah, for the seven point five percent budget, five counties were carrying forty-seven percent of the general fund dues, and six were carrying fifty-one point seven percent of the general fund dues. Anyway, my proposal to you is, rather than accepting the twenty percent increase to the general fund dues, that we, following our property tax increase of four percent, that we support a general fund dues increase of four percent, which would mean that our we would pay an increase of five thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents with to the twenty twenty-two level. So we would pay a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Then we would pay the CFTLC dues of eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents, carrying our grand total to a hundred and fifty-two thousand and ninety one hundred and fifty-two thousand and ninety-one dollars. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Sharon. As I've expressed before to this board, I appreciate the work that you've done on this. And given my role at AOC, now I'm in this as well. And I thought a lot about, you brought this up at our last meeting, and there were some some comments around the table. Commissioner Rogers, I appreciated your comment about either either don't pay it or pay it type of approach. I and the reason that I am supporting the four percent is that this has been an issue that has been, we've been trying to work on this, as the Chair said, her first interaction was last April. The Budget Committee didn't have didn't meet quorum, so we were caught in like a vortex, basically, for a period of time. Then in November, we talked again to the President and the Vice Chair about the situation. We've had discussions with the leadership of AOC, and we're in a situation, basically, where the voting structure structure is such that no matter what we say, we're going to be outvoted. So my my view in in putting forward a payment that includes a four percent increase is in good faith, that it's like, okay, we we recognize that expenses are going up. We are we're putting this four percent forward. That's reflective of what our increases are, what we see in terms of our revenue increases. So I'm comfortable with that for those reasons. It's a longer story than just, and I'm not saying that you said it was a short story, but you know the length of the story, but just for for the record, it's a longer story than just all of a sudden we have these increases and we don't want to pay. We've been trying to have these conversations, and they haven't, we haven't been able to get anywhere. And by getting somewhere, what I mean is at least a relook at the structure. I'm not saying that we haven't been getting anywhere in relationship to paying lower dues. It's just a relook at the structure, and there's a pretty heels dug in type of attitude. So that's why I am in support of this approach.
My my position hasn't changed. Reasonable people can have different viewpoints. I mean, I always believed somebody sends you a bill, you either pay it, or you dispute it. And that's all what you do. And I certainly, I know Pam, both you and Catherine have done 300% of what you ought to have to do. I mean, you've already been fighting with them and they've not budged. And so saying, we agree, we ought to pay more and coming up with some arbitrary number to me is not the answer. I, I would just, just pay last year's dues. And so you justify what the answer is. We're tired of arguing. We're tired of fighting. We're tired of not getting answered. There is absolutely no incentive and you guys are the experts. I'm not. But there's no incentive for them to do anything. Why should they? I mean, you're one county out of 36 and the other four, five, if they cave, they won't listen. So I applaud your efforts. I'm certainly not going to fight on this. I'm just simply saying, I, I would pay last year's dues and say, you justify the changes. And, and let's not say we're, we're a little bit with you, but you know, we don't know where that is. Why not 5%, 6%, why not 3%? So just pay it. Last year's due to be done.
And I understand that position. And I, I've thought about that and I, I think that it, it is, it's a good position to take. The reason that I'm not, I, I wouldn't support it is that this is not a normal, we provide these services. Here's your invoice. This is a situation where the people being invoiced decide what that invoice is going to look like. So it's a little different than a set rate and you know, you pay the invoice. We haven't been able to get through as a formula that works. So in, and plus in talking to people like Commissioner Thompson, I want, I'm, I'm more comfortable saying, look at, we understand that in, that there's price increases. We've put forward a 4% increase here and it gives us a little bit better position for negotiating why they should consider a different of formula. That's, that's just my viewpoint. Other commissioners?
Well, I, I am. Where's the other four counties of five here? Where are they on, on, not physically, I mean, where are they in this discussion?
Clackamas County is discussing it today. And this, as we, Commissioner Tries and I heard from the chair of Multnomah County, this was not on her radar screen, given everything else she was doing. So she's beginning to look at it now. I haven't talked to Lane County about it, nor of the top five, Marion would be the fifth.
The other, the other.
Well, I'm meeting with JVP with you this week. So this is going to be a part of the conversation.
Yes, but in preparation for that meeting, you should know that different counties approach AOC membership differently. And in Multnomah County, the decision to participate in AOC rests with the chair. So that individual can determine whether or not, and I believe it comes out of that budget, that bureaus, the bureau that she oversees or P. Budget. So.
She also mentioned that the other commissioners are pretty dismayed with AOC as well as reflected by their not being engaged on steering committees.
And the, as far as Clackamas goes, the rumor, and it's only what I've heard on the street, is that they are also looking at, at their membership and questioning the value there. So, and I don't question the value of the membership. I question the, the process to get to the due structure. That's, that's where I am.
Yep.
Well, since just.
That's why I think, that's why I made the 4%.
Yeah. It's just interesting to me that any organization would think they could raise dues by that much, two years back to back and not have to have some sort of negotiations with, if nothing else, the big five, you know?
The issue is that it was not clear until Catherine did the analytics on the way the formula works that, that there was that type of increase. So for most, for most counties and for the, you know, the, the optics are that it's a 7.5% increase.
Right.
But it's the way that it is calculated results in a very high increase for the larger counties.
Yep.
So, so that's the issue. So everybody else is going, okay, seven and a half. Okay, that's, we'll do that. Yeah. Only guess what?
And it physically is a seven and a half percent. I mean.
It's not seven and a half percent.
Not to us.
Lower ones.
Lower than seven and a half to lower ones.
Oh.
So that if you have all your counties stacked up according to size.
Something a CPA put together.
The lower, the lower counties pay less than the amount. The, the mid counties are the place where we could probably see an increase and in fact have been told by some commissioners that they could absorb an increase there. So, and it's the higher counties that are carrying the weight.
And 25 counties pay less than $30,000.
And you look at what we. So anyway, that's.
So then my, my last question and Tom, I, I spear jumped that I could have said, it sounds like something an attorney would put together, but I stayed with Roy and I had this. So then lastly, there is nothing in the chart because I mean, we, we pay a 4%. So obviously there's a balance due. Do you have to have, be in good standing with your dues to be able to participate on boards and committees?
There is, there was a provision discussed in the bylaws changes this year around affiliate members. But it doesn't match up with the bylaws of the affiliates.
So three of the largest counties can be affiliate counties and represent, you know.
Most people.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's all the other affiliate organizations, the assessors and.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I mean, that's an excellent question, Jerry. That's exactly where I was going to my mind is it, why not just say, okay, we'll take your 4%. None of you can serve in any leadership capacity on any committee.
I'm not sure that would be a good idea on.
It would be a very bad idea.
The 24 dues might not be forthcoming.
Yeah. But you've already paid them.
The 24.
Chair Harrington, are you done?
I am done.
Thumbs up for me, what you're recommending. Both of you did your homework and had intensive conversations with people. I think I was convinced the first day I saw you with your spreadsheet that this was in the best interest of Washington County, what you were doing. So I support where, where we're going.
You must read this one.
Catherine, is this your work?
Yes. Oh, no, that's.
No, this is from them.
All the, the number analysis is mine.
Okay.
Of breaking down still pays.
Still reflected, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think it's in best interest for Washington County. Let us know if we need to show up in those meetings. And we'll try to move our calendar to if there's a vote needed on the budget. Consign, yeah, if it coincides with JPAC or any of these mandatory committee meetings for me, then we'll, we'll work. So Megan will work with Brenda and try, try to move my.
I understand. So if we approve the 4%, is that in the budget we don't have to make?
Yes.
And this most likely will not be the end of the discussion. So it just, it'll move forward. But it will send a strong message about the formula and yet at the same time, a willingness to participate. And that's what I'm looking for.
Are you okay with moving forward with?
I'm okay with this. I mean, I, to me, it's mind blowing. It's like we put together a budget for Washington County and then we send all the people who live in Washington County a bill. Let me say, we decided we want to have this much money this year and you're going to pick up the tab.
We don't quite have that choice.
I know.
You're going to pay more.
You sounded an alarm, Chair Harrington. I think, you know, I, I'm hearing Clackamas County and Washington County now, but Washington County, we were the ones that called out. So Chair Harrington, to your credit, good job.
Yeah, you've done a lot of work on this, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, onward hope. So leadership communication, Ms. Angie.
I, excuse me, I, I, I need to make one other announcement that I forgot in my, in my update.
We could write a letter too, by the way.
To AOC?
To AOC.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And this has nothing to do with it.
I'll bring a draft letter in for next week.
That's a good idea, I think.
Okay.
I'll work with you on that too, if you'd like.
Yep.
I just, I wanted to let the, the board know that in completing the review process for Ms. Angie, I am putting together a proposal for your review and then for, I assume a, a board meeting on compensation. So, so I just wanted to let you know that you'll be receiving that this week.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. I just have a very brief leadership update today as the board is aware. Eva Labonte is transitioning out of her Chief Human Resources Officer position here at Washington County and has accepted a position in Commerce City, Colorado as their Human Resources Director. This is another step in Eva's journey. It allows her to be closer to her two children who are living in the house that their family had recently built over, over this last year in Colorado. So her last day will be February 10th. We are actively working with Strategic Government Resources. One of the branches of Strategic Government Resources is their interim placements. So we are working through reviewing potential interim candidates to help us out in the transition. And then we will be working to secure recruiter for permanent replacement of the Chief Human Resources Officer. As the board may recall, this is a similar process we use in the replacement of our chief financial officer to bring in an interim and then to start the recruitment process. Typically recruitment processes for a department director can last anywhere from, excuse me, six to six months to a year. So having some stability, supporting the department during this transition is really critical. I just want to extend appreciation for a leader, Eva's dedication, responsiveness to Washington County and especially during the COVID pandemic. The internal operations of the county is not always seen as far as HR, but really rapid policy changes, communication was really centered to COVID response. So just really appreciate her leadership during that time. And that concludes my update.
That she's leaving?
February 10th.
10th.
Can I ask a question? I do appreciate Ms. Labonte's service here. So thank you to you, Eva. The question that I have is during that interim time period or interim placement period, do we have the opportunity to look at the organizational structure of the HR function, much like we did with the financial group?
Yes, so we currently are reviewing RFPs that, for organizational assessment and HR modernization. And so we will be bringing in an outside consulting firm to be working simultaneously, not only on org structure, but putting in a clear strategic work plan to ensure that we are modernizing our HR services.
I just wanted to highlight that. So thank you.
And that concludes my update. Great. Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Good morning, Chair Harrington. I have a very brief update on Measure 114. As you may have read in the newspapers, the, the, as you know, the horny, horny court circus judge, horny county circuit judge had stayed implementation of Measure 114 on all grounds. The state had, on Friday filed what's called a petition of mandamus, so that which just means the Supreme Court has general supervisory authority over the circuit courts and you can take an extraordinary writ, which directly to the Supreme Court seeking them to overturn. The state did that on Friday, seeking the state Supreme Court to overturn. The federal court, as you know, had denied the motion for a injunction, but at the state's request, stayed implementation of Measure 114 until March 8th, 2023, to allow for assembling all the pieces that need to be in place before it can go into effect. So I would expect the Supreme Court to act relatively quickly. The state has asked for a stay of the decision from the horny county, to honey county judge. But in any event, nothing will happen further on implementation till at least March 8th, when this federal stay will expire. And again, that was at the request of the state. So I'll continue to keep you apprised and as you probably know, Elmer Dickens is working both for us and for the Association of Sheriffs. So he's very much involved in putting together all the efforts to comply with Measure 114 if it goes into effect. But that's my update. Thank you.
Any update as to whether or not the state, I seem to recall, leading up to the effective date post-election, that the state had the systems difficulty with implementing. If the timeframe goes out to the March timeframe, will the state be ready then?
I'm not sure I can follow up on that. The, the problem was that the, just doing the background check would not fit within their system. So they didn't figure out how to do that and work with the federal government on that.
Yep.
Okay. Be able to do the work to figure out what they would need to do. Does this stay affect that?
No.
Are they continuing to work?
Continue to work to implement state, to state only, the state only affects the actual implementation measure.
Thank you. Chair, I have a quick question for Tom.
Of course.
Tom, could you give us an update on the flavored tobacco appeal?
Yeah, we're still waiting for the transcript. So nothing's happened on that appeal. We've appealed, we filed a notice of appeal, but.
All right. This, if I remember correctly, I need that as you recall moment. Didn't the judge make a decision, but he said he wouldn't be making a written order? He would just be dealing with it verbally?
He did. The, the, the issue, then they applied for attorney's fees and he denied their application for attorney's fees, finding that the, the decision could have gone either, either way. And that, that's the final judgment and we're still waiting to perfect all of that to get it up into the court of appeals. But I will certainly keep you apprised as that goes.
Okay. Turning to something completely different, Clean Water Services, Ms. Taniguchi Dennis.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. Just a one short announcement is we're, we too are looking forward to the Clean Water Essentials for elected officials. And we're, I'm happy that you're going to be there to talk and greet everyone. So Thursday, Twelton Room at 5:00 PM and Saturday at Durham at 9:00 AM. So the team's really excited. They, I think, prepared a really great agenda, so.
Great. Onward how we go. Any questions on today's formal agenda?
I'd just say it's nice to see Jerry and the audience looking much better than the last time we saw you on Zoom, Jerry. So welcome back.
He and I got the memo on the color.
Yes.
Oh, we, we must have somehow.
Now we are.
Our memo wasn't clear to read.
Now we are.
All righty, well, a pretty straightforward agenda. So we're planning for the business meeting. So we're hoping to come back here to work session at 11:00 AM. Okay?
I have one comment on the agenda. It's appropriate at this point. It's an item that you have brought to us regarding an executive assistance. I'm not going to get into the value. I have no idea. That's up to you. But what I appreciated was that you found savings. I, I think you always lead by example and you sit there and said, not only will I fund this position, I will save money. I hope that every one of your departments and department heads takes the same position this year in regard to anything they ask for. So I, I just want to compliment you.
So I want to be clear and clarify. So this is restructuring too. So.
I understand.
And we're looking at, yep, their savings and also alignment to ensure that we are hiring for the business needs of today, not the business needs of the past. So I just want to commend the County Administration Office Team for pulling together and looking at this very creatively.
Safe compliment. I think it's important what you did.
Okay, great. Well, we'll see everyone back here at 11 o'clock. Thank you.